Of the North Little Rock City Council Order, Ms. Whitby, would you please call the row?
Gibson.
Present.
Yildin.
Here.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Here.
Berry.
Here.
Bestel.
Present.
Hite.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
Aquormis present.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Can I so we stand for the prayer to be led by Alderman Gibson, caused by the pledge of Alderman Yildin?
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly father, we thank thee for this beautiful day. We thank thee for the blessings that you give in this city. We ask that you be with the friends, families, and those members who are overseas intending to make this world a better place for us to live. These things we ask in thy name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Motion made. Seconded. The amendments to the previous meeting be approved and the special call as submitted. Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Before we go to the communications, I'd like to just acknowledge that one of the city's really strong supporters and people who have guided this community for a long time passed away this past week, Bay Wright, whom many of us know with Danco and Diamond Construction Company, died after a short illness and will, the funeral will be tomorrow at 2:00 at Park Hill Baptist Church. They know all of us who knew him, knew the Wright family, knew how much he contributed to the Boys and Girls Clubs with many things that this community supports. And I know I can speak on behalf of all of us to send our sympathy to his family at this time. With that, communications. Do I have a blanket motion?
No.
Just a second. Motion made. And seconded. Any council member want to pull one? All right, Alderman Yildin.
I'm going to pull number 12.
Number 12.
Five.
Twelve and five.
Fourteen.
Twelve, five, fourteen. On the remainder. Whitby, Alderman, twelve, five, and fourteen.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number five, do you want that by title?
Alderman, you know, I'm sure Alderman Robinson would care for that to be read. Alderman Robinson, I, council, council person. It's her legislation, it's her letter and she wants it read.
Okay. This is a message regarding curbside recycling. It says, "I am very much in favor of curbside recycling. My son and I lived in Solomon Springs prior to moving to North Little Rock in 1998. Solomon Springs had curbside recycling when we were residents there. It was great. I'm not sure if it was profitable to the city. We need to do something, we can do, we need to do anything we can do to preserve our environment. My son and I recycle newspaper, corrugated boxes, plastic tin, and aluminum cans at the Pike Avenue recycling bins. It would be more convenient if we had curbside recycling. Thank you for your time. Teresa Dow, 108 Melrose Circle, North Little Rock."
Motion made. Set and file. Seconded. On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number 12.
Let's do fourteen and then twelve.
Okay. Do you want number 14 read?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is a letter to Mayor Hayes and council people. I want to thank each of you for all the time you spend working for a better North Little Rock, a place we all love to live. You're doing a great job. We, the members of the Rose City Property Owners Association, oppose the curbside recycling. We want you to think about the problems this can cause the elderly, handicapped, and those especially on fixed incomes. Most say they'll not use the service. They say it's hard enough to carry their one or two garbage cans to the curb and back. Now you're asking them to carry yet another container. We feel the city should pay for this. It seems we have plenty of extra money for submarines, trolley car, walking trails, benches with concrete pads, and studies. Personally, as for my family and I, we don't care either way it goes, but I'd like the city to pay for it. I think we, the city, can afford to pay for it. And I'd like to thank you for thinking about the elderly and people on fixed incomes. Thank you, John Baker, President, Rose City Property Owners Association."
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number 12 now.
This is a letter dated April 17, 2003, to the Honorable Patrick Henry Hayes. Dear Mayor Hayes, thank you for contacting me regarding remote control locomotive safety in and around North Little Rock. I appreciate hearing from you on this important issue. I am forwarding your letter with my support to the Federal Railroad Administration. Safety on our railways is of great importance to me. It's important to encourage the FRA to uphold its safety responsibilities on the nation's railroads, and I applaud your recent efforts to do so. Thank you again for writing. If I may be of further assistance to you on this or any future issue, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Marion Berry, Member of Congress."
New, accept and file.
Thank you. On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
And that's all the communication?
Yes, sir.
Now, I think the only public hearing is on curbside recycling. I know that's a piece of legislation that we have, and I would propose that we deal with the public hearing, and then we go into that agenda item so that we can dispense with that right the first, in case there's anybody here that wants to go speak and be aware of what the council might do. Unless there's objection, then Ms. Whitby, we'd like to do that, and then I'd like to call 0312 after the public hearing. So at this point, let me convene the public hearing. The microphone's open. This is the third and final public hearing, and we'd like to hear from you. Ms. Harris.
Good evening. It's always a joy to get up here and write. About two and a half years ago, Mayor Hayes came out to the Recreation Center where we were having our meeting. He came to Poe Edition, which was a substation, and also to Bethany Baptist Church, and he was asking us to help him pass the one cent sales tax, that it would help us get a new library or more onto the library, a senior citizen building. And most of all, in doing so, he would take the sanitation fee off our utilities. Well, I know that he's not going to put the sanitation money back on our utilities, but I don't feel like anyone that doesn't want to participate in recycling, a lot of people don't have anything to recycle. My newspapers go to a church organization in Lone Oak that they use the newspapers for. My cans, drink cans, what few I have, takes me about three months fill up a container, goes to Lone Oak. As far as the regular sanitation pickup at my house, I probably could just go about once a month, but it's not to say that I couldn't afford the $1.75, but I know three people that live on my street that their social security is not $400 a month. And they just live hand to mouth, and I just don't think really and truly that we should be forced to have the $1.75 on our utility bill after we were told two and a half years ago, or maybe less, that there would not be any charges on our utility bills at all. I can say this. I can't keep you all from putting that $1.75 on my bill. And if I must have a container, the only thing I can think of after seeing the little green bin, that it'd make a wonderful, either flower bed or to raise worms in it so I could have these people pay their bill. Thank you.
Microphone's open.
Mayor Hayes, council members, my name's Jim Roberts. I do have some questions because I want to, and what I'm interested in is the container. I don't see a lid on those containers. Do they have lids?
We'll let Mr. Roberts, is he here? I think he is, John Roberts.
Are you not counting?
I tell you what, I think it might be good because there may be a lot of questions that are being asked and being answered. If, John, if you could, would you mind deferring Jim for just a moment or two?
I'd be glad to.
Come up and show you the container and then, you know, sort of go over a little bit of what we're perhaps talking about, and then maybe you can answer some of the questions. Would you mind deferring him for a moment or two?
Uh, don't.
We'd like, we'd like for you to come over to the microphone so everybody else can hear and kind of take over for a moment or two if you would. Maybe you can answer some questions that people might have before they ask.
This is an 18-gallon recycling container, just like the ones used in Little Rock. I have one in my house. No, there is not a cover for it because that makes it harder to put things in it. The type of things you're going to be putting in it, plastic, aluminum, metal, things of that nature, are pretty much impervious to water, rainwater, and things like that. And if you, as we do at our house, rinse them out before you put them in there, you don't have any, mine sits right on my back porch, right outside my back door. And I walk out the back door and I throw my milk cartons and everything, my milk jugs in.
Why don't you talk a little bit about, you know, I know there's been questions asked about the difficulty of getting them out to the street. Why don't you talk about a moment or two if somebody is a handicap or disabled, you know, would you also talk a little bit about the education?
Yes, sir.
Would you also, I think you've got a stroller over there that you might want to, you know, refer to. So, Jim, if you might, wouldn't mind, I don't know how long this is going to take, and so you're sure welcome to stand there, but I thought maybe, maybe as we go now, he can, he can deal with some of these issues.
Just let him go when I can come back up.
You're welcome to stand.
I kind of like having you up here, Whitby. There's two Robinsons up here. We can't go barefoot.
You're Robinson, you're Robinson.
Robinson out of Missouri.
So we're not in.
Okay, let's address first, and I thought I saw Harold Ford come in here. Harold, in your pickups for trash, do you have certain people that are physically handicapped that you go up to their door and pick up their trash? Is that correct?
Less than 100 citywide.
Less than 100 citywide. We will take that list and do exactly the same thing for those people that cannot get them down there. Our recycling trucks will stop them. Now, for folks that might need just a little help, I went out to Walmart, and I bought this little luggage carrier right here, and it's got a bungee strap on it. It'll go up and downstairs. It'll, you know, and here again, you can just sit it right by your back door, right outside your back door, put your stuff in there. They'll pick it up, nothing in the truck.
How much was that?
I think it was $22. And he's going to provide that? No.
Let me, let me, let me indicate that should the council support this, I don't know whether the city could acquire them at a more reasonable rate. If we could, you know, then I would very much support acquiring them and then selling them at just whatever the cost is. I don't know whether that'd be an advantage or not.
Well, you can't beat that.
Well.
If you want them, no. You can't beat that. All right, finally, about education. When we introduced curbside recycling in Little Rock seven years ago, we had a pretty thorough education campaign. As the bins are distributed, there'll be, there'll be a flyer in it telling the folks what you can and cannot put in. My wife still can't remember what she can put in the bin. But if something is, say, put in the bin wrong, then the driver will leave a little note and say, "Please don't deposit your," whatever it was, in there.
Diapers.
Don't want to put diapers in there. No.
Well, wait a minute. Come on, let's just give him a chance to talk, and then we can comment or ask questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We will also have a public information campaign through the newspaper and hopefully billboards and things like that, notifying people that curbside recycling's going to be starting and what you can look for in it. We'll also have, Wayne, would you all have a line? We have one at the telephone line, we have one at the solid waste district that you can call and get information from. We have a webpage that you can sign on to that there's information on curbside recycling, and we'll be glad to appear at any public neighborhood meetings, anything like that, and answer any and all questions. Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
Education.
Education. We are currently presently in working with just about every school in the county, educating schoolchildren about what should be recycled and what shouldn't be recycled, or what can't be recycled. Ladies and gentlemen, 60% of our solid waste stream is paper alone, just paper. If we could get that out of the solid waste stream, we could make a tremendous dent in it, and it starts right here by making it convenient. We're simply trying to make it convenient for you to recycle. And we feel like the more people know about recycling through our education process, the better they are.
What, it starts at a $1.75. What's the length of term of the contract? And I assume there's an annual increase. I know the answer to that, but I'm just asking you to answer it.
Contract is for seven years. There's what's called a CPI or Consumer Price Index Increase built into the contract, both for Little Rock and North Little Rock, North Little Rock, excuse me. This is not run more than 2% a year in my right wing.
Two and a half.
Two and a half percent a year, and it cannot exceed 20% over the life of the contract.
What, do you know, can you do the math, and what would 20% be of?
Of a $1.75, about 35 cents.
Thirty pounds. 208.
Yeah.
So the maximum over a seven-year period would be $2.08. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What happens if you have more recyclables than that container will hold?
Put them out there, we'll pick them up. That's a great thing, you know, because I don't want our guys. Can you come up? Bring them up here.
Make yourself, please. It's all right.
This is Wayne Rafferty, who's the General Manager for Waste Management here in Arkansas.
Vandalism and attrition.
If someone would like that, Mayor, we would, we would give them two containers. In Little Rock, the average weight of the containers per resident is about 13.4 pounds, and that's over seven years, the data indicates.
Could y'all hang around just a second or two? Open the floor for questions from the council?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Oliver, hi.
I was, my question is, is missing containers, vandalism, attrition, who bears the cost on the replacement?
With the contract with Little Rock, we have, the first 200 we replace, then after that, the city is responsible for reimbursing us. Those containers are about $4.50 apiece.
$4.50.
Yes, sir.
Right. And the city of Little Rock, as far as number of households is what, three times greater?
Twice.
Okay, so a little bit more than twice.
About double.
All right. How is that equation working then on a monthly basis or wherever, annual basis for the 200?
I would say in Little Rock, we probably replace about 60 a month.
60?
A month. So it's about half and half. We cover half of it, and they cover the other half.
Questions from the council? Alderman Berry?
What's the container made out of?
Plastic.
Recyclable plastic?
Yes, sir. Recyclable plastic.
What, let me ask you, what are your complaints been? What are the most frequent complaint in Little Rock?
When we first started the program, the education of it, and what we would do, Mayor, is we would leave a tag, we'd say, "This is not a recyclable item." And what we found, that we were turning people off. And what we started to do in Little Rock, our commitment to Little Rock to try to increase the participation, was to take it off. And we have a residue rate with them where a lot of things we take aren't recyclable, but instead of putting them back, upsetting people, we take them, and part of that goes their landfill.
How do you handle that? Is there a charge for that?
No, sir. No, sir.
Are you anticipating doing something similar here?
Yes, sir. We are.
And so the charge would be all encompassing?
Yes, sir.
Questions? Alderman Gibson?
I know the Little Rock one is probably relevant. What percentage do you feel after the first year and the second year, let's say the third year, the percentage of recyclable material, or total garbage or total sanitation, do you think would be recycled?
Probably, based on what we get out of Little Rock, is about 400 tons a month. I would anticipate about 225 tons a month being recycled in North Little Rock.
What percentage that is, our total? You expect 200?
And 25 tons.
25 tons. Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
Well, a little fault on this. What do you project, then, the first year savings to the city of North Little Rock to be in this program? And I'm, and I'm taking into consideration that our first year will be our worst year as far as utilization.
Well, I talked with Mr. Ford today and was explaining to him, if it were, say, 200 tons a month, if we actually went to the low side, and that's about 600 cubic yards a month, and at a rate of about $6.50 to the landfill, just based on your landfill savings, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $4,000 a month.
Am I?
Yes, sir. Which, if you annualize that, might be somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000. That, that's just ballpark figures that we came with.
That's an educated guess, what you're saying is.
Yes, sir. And it's based on statistics from what we've seen in other communities. There are no, I mean, I couldn't sit here and guarantee that number, but just based on our stats.
That's what, 25 cents, 20 cents per household savings per month, if you annualize it? What's it come out to?
The numbers I was looking at, and I'm taking our total landfill cost, are about $450,000, give or take a few diams, to the landfill. We have another $450,000, give or take, that we also, is a compost, that we take to the compost, which is, won't affect this at all. If we're able to 10% recycle of the total, we would save 10% of that 45, that 450,000 or 45,000, which is roughly $2 per household per year. If we're able to do 20% recycling, we would equate to about $4 per household per year. 30% would be $6, and 40% would be $8 a year, total savings. And round numbers, the two items we would have to, that would be a cost, it'd be a bad debt because we would assume the $1.75 percent, $1.75 a month per household that has a container. And our bad debt is running on residential less than 1%, eight tenths of 1% or something like that. That's been, and it's probably less than that on total residential when you take out the apartment complexes because that number includes our apartment complexes that are in there. So there could be, and as I've told a lot of people who have asked me about it, I'm for recycling, but I think that if we have a savings, if the city saves $45,000 a year in tiffin fees, that we should send that money back on an annual basis off of the next available bill to the people.
We wouldn't be able to do that, though, until 2000.
Yeah, full year. You'd have to have a full year because you can't, you can't do it on a monthly basis.
Well, if we start this thing, we wouldn't have to have a full year. We'd do whatever we say about it.
Well, let's just make our year January, July 1 to June 30, and put it on, in the middle of the year type thing, something along that line to be able to do it mid-year. But you would have a full, it's going to be somewhat difficult, but we get a bill from everything we take. When we take to brush, it's not called brushy alley anymore.
Two-pine.
Two-pine. I like that name much better. It, I'd change the name of it again if I were them before long, but it's a number we can determine. It's not going to be, it's something that we're going to have to sit down and say, here's how much our total, how much we took in June of 2002, and here's how much we took in June 2003. And that's the only way I know to be able to do it on an ongoing basis. We've got approximately the same amount of households involved. The household count hasn't changed. I believe Mr. Sisson tells me it's going to be around 20,400 households that would be eligible for recycling because if you're in an apartment complex or in a high-rise, even though you have an electric bill, you would not have a recycling bill.
But we'd need a year's worth of experience out of it.
You'd have, it'd have to years' experience, but if we only saved two, if we only did 10%, and I have a lot of faith in the city of North Little Rock that we would go a whole lot closer to 20% recycling. And if I look at my own, I could recycle 60% of mine on an easy basis because there's, firstly, it's that stack of newspapers, that stack of magazines, the milk jugs, the cereal boxes, there's just a lot of things. That doesn't leave much in my garbage.
I agree.
Alderman Thomas?
I just wanted to say to the Waste Management, certainly they do a fine job. I don't have any problem at all with them, that those that do not want to participate, what do we do? Just give you a list of our addresses and tell you we don't want the container? Is that, is that the way we do it?
No, sir. That's not, that would not be the agreement. It would be a full participation.
Well, yeah, but there's a lot of people that's not going to participate, that's not going to take the container. So that's what I'm saying, how to save you the trouble of taking it out there and leaving it because it's expensive item. And I know it's you that'll do a good job, but they will not participate. So what, do you need that list of their names and addresses not to?
If we should adopt it, Alderman Thomas, I'll work, I'll work with you.
It'll be adopted.
We'll, we'll compile a name of the people that don't want it and ensure that they won't get something they don't want.
Can, can we send it to you directly, though? That's what I'm saying.
If it went through the city staff, that'd be sufficient.
Okay, but because, see, I don't want you to lose those, those $400 and some containers there.
Yes, sir.
But as I say, I don't have a thing wrong with you.
If this council should adopt this, that's the last thing we want to do, is to burden somebody with an item that they, that they don't want. So, you know, I'll work with you and any of the citizens who don't want that, and should we adopt this, and ensure that they won't have to receive that.
That's good, okay.
God, what, excuse me?
Sure, give me three.
Can I address Alderman Robinson? I gave you an answer three weeks ago, kind of off the hip, as far as Rose City and the drop-off center. What happened there six years ago was a change in ownership of the property, and the new owners did not allow us to put the site there. So I apologize for the answer three weeks ago. Okay.
All right, we'll turn it back over to all your brothers.
Mayor, council members, my concern is the container. You know we've got summer coming on to us, and we'll go, you know, that West Nile, everything else, and the mosquitoes will be a problem to us. So what I'm, my concern is, are they going to put these at every house? Now, it could be remedied, I mean, what my problem is with it. It could be remedied. But I noticed that the holes in that old bear are real small, and they're a quarter inch, the water will still be a quarter inch below those holes, because I don't think everybody will put these containers in a covered place. I don't think they will. They might, but, but my concern is about mosquitoes. We don't need any more mosquitoes than what we get. And that is my main concern. This one here has holes in it that's like a dime. That one has holes in there like a thump hat. But if they could just make them where the water will get completely out of the containers, that's my concern.
I'm sure that the company will work with us. Should we adopt it in any reasonable request, I don't think any of us want to expose our citizens to any, any more jeopardy than might otherwise have to be.
Well, that's my main concern is about the containers. And I sure don't want no more mosquitoes.
We don't like mosquitoes. Like a lot of things, not mosquitoes. Microphone is open.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Now, I talked to y'all here a little while back about this, that I, first I was against it, but I am not against recycling. But I told you where my aluminum went, and I have a fireplace, and if you've ever rolled up newspapers, you know what they'll do. You burn them. And I told you what I done with my half a gallon milk jugs. I freeze ice in them when I go fishing. So I don't have anything to recycle. And... And I don't believe it's right to, for someone to have to pay for something when they don't use it. And this one cent sale tax deal here told us that our garbage was being dropped. And now then you're bringing it back. You're not, but you're allowing it to happen through waste management. And I would like to be one of the first ones to say that I don't want one of them canisters in front of my house. I've got two 40 gallon garbage cans that I take to the street one at a time and they got wheels on them. And I don't want one of these in front of my house and I'm not going to keep up with it. So if they put one out there and they lose it, it's going to be somebody else's expense. I don't mean to be smart, but I sell my aluminum and I take care of my newspapers. And I'd just like to be one to say y'all can do whatever you want to do with the canister. Thank you.
Microphones open.
I'm Joe Reynolds and I appreciate the opportunity to comment. I am not against recycling. However, I believe I'm against being charged for it when we were more or less promised or told that the one cent was going to take care of it. I heard, you've already heard that and I'm just echoing that situation. And I normally use the drop-off situations and I'll probably continue to, if there's a drop-off situation near me, I'll continue to use it. I don't, I, I know my wife, it gets full, she can't carry it out to the street. My grandson's seven years old, I know he can't carry it out to the street. So if, if they want to recycle, I guess they can, but I don't think we should be asking the people of North Little Rock to pay for it after the one cent sales tax was approved for that particular situation to take care of all of our sanitation needs. And I know that if we do this, how many trucks will we put back out in the neighborhood? Three for the whole city? Okay. So these are diesel trucks? Heavy trucks. Heavy trucks do damages to streets and diesel trucks put fumes out in my grandson's nostrils when he's playing outside. So that's, that's some of my concerns. Thank you.
Microphone's still open.
Good evening, council. I'm James R. I am for recycling, but I do feel the city promised us that we voted for the one cent cell tax, which I did. This is part of my trash and I wish you would consider it. If you want to vote it in, fix a way the city can pay for it. I'm sorry, I'm against the way you fear, ma, mayor, but I just feel that we was told something and we're not being given at this point. But I am for it. Have a good day.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm John DeGruy from Scenic Hill. Last meeting, I come up here and commented that everybody on Scenic Hill was against this recycling. Well, my phone has rang off of the wall and seems like it's about a 50-50 deal up there. The problem with them is our senior citizens. They don't want to be involved in this. Some of them do, some of them don't. If you want to pass this thing, put an addendum in there where the ones that want to participate in it, let them participate and those that don't, leave them out of it. Now, I work, well, I work over there at this Senior Citizens Center. There's 3,500 senior citizens over there. The other, last Thursday when I was up there, they had two fellows sitting there talking about this recycling. One of them said, "Well, I don't know. I haven't heard anything about it." The other one said, "Well, they're going to start and they'll put out a container for you and you'll get all your recycling plastic and bottles and papers and put in this." Now, he said, "You mean to tell me that I've got to dig down in my trash can when I get out to the street, dig all this stuff out of it and throw it in a box and then they're going to charge me $1.75 to dig in my trash can?" He said, "Yeah." So the, I think the secret to this thing is education. It's like Mr. Roberts said, people don't know what is taking place. I know a lot of people take the newspaper and I don't think they read it because a lot of them over there, it takes the times and they take the Democrat and they wasn't aware that this was going to take place. So before you pass this and tie something up on it, I'd recommend, there's Mr. Roberts here, get him in there, get some education out on this to these people. Let them understand what it is and what's taking place. Everybody, a lot of them is in favor of it. They think it's a great thing. So let's put a little education out there in the paper, see what happens to them. And by the way, I've got one other thing that's not pertains to this. Canada put a restriction on their remote control locomotives up there the other day. Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Microphones open.
Mr. Mayor and council, find, my name's Dave Almendinger. I have a janitorial supply business here in North Little Rock. Find myself tonight in a kind of unusual position. I've never stood up in front of the city council or my community and spoken out in favor of something. But tonight I do that because I am in favor of recycling. I understand the need for the numbers. I understand the need for those that are on restricted incomes. But to me, the issue of recycling goes to, why are we recycling? Why are we doing that? And as I look at most of the people here, I would hope that we are recycling because we're trying to preserve our environment. I haven't heard anyone address that. Heaven knows that every other city of any consequence in our country has programs like this already in place. And I think that this city deserves such a program. I, I think our, our people in the community deserve it. I, I know that the numbers have to be met, but at the same time, I think all of us would like to see our, our grandchildren and their children have trees to look at. I think they'd, I think they'd enjoy that, as all of us have. So I, I find myself here promoting recycling and I, I hope that that's the decision that the council makes. The only other thing I'd like to say is to congratulate the mayor and those of you on the, the city council for the hard fought and one effort to acquire the best pro shops in our North Shore here. I think you deserve a round of applause for that. Congratulations. I know that was a coup that our, our fellow citizens on the South Side will, will long regret. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Don Coonan. I teach biology up at Pulaski Tech and I'd like to pick up on the environmental issue and on the education issue that were just brought up. There's a few comments running through my head. One of them is, I was born and raised here in North Little Rock. I've lived in Oklahoma and Kansas. I've lived in England and Italy and Sweden. And I can tell you, North Little Rock has the best sanitation procedures and department that I've ever seen anywhere in the world. This is the one ingredient, I think, that we're missing though, is the, to pick up on the recycling issue. I recycle everything down to, if I take a can of soup to work, I bring the can back home with me to put into my recycling. And I manage to get a bag of trash about every other week out to the curb for the sanitation to take. So I know with education, as it was mentioned before, this will have to be promoted, the program will be, and public education too, some, but I think the savings in economically, which is what we've been talking about recently or before, will work. And the environment is such an important issue. I mean, this is what all the progressive areas in the country and cities are doing around the world. We also need to think about the environment. Who are, who are we leaving this world to when we get finished with our business at hand and the things that we can change and make a difference in? We need to leave this planet to our heirs and I would rather leave it with them looking back on a thank goodness they had the wisdom to do this when they did. A dollar 75 to me a month, I, you know, I gladly pay in order to set something like this in motion, something that's important to this on a, on local level as far as our landfill goes and on a nationwide level and a worldwide level. So I think it's a exceedingly important program.
Microphone's still open.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Simpson. I'm from the Poedish Neighborhood Association. I am not against recycling at all. In fact, we do need to improve our environment. What I am against on this are these totes or bins, whatever they want to call them. I was over at a friend's house in Little Rock and she was putting trash out. So I told her I would carry this down. It was a little over half full and it was heavy. Now, a lot of senior citizens cannot do that. And two, if they don't have a lid on them, a lot of people does not have a garage, I don't. They're sitting out if it rains. I don't care if you rinse out the cans or whatever, that rainwater is going to get in the cans and you're going to have a good breeding places for mosquitoes. So these totes is really the problem because it's going to be heavy for a lot of senior citizens. It was heavy for me and maybe I'm getting to be a senior citizen, but I really don't think I'm that old. But it, it gets heavy and it's good breeding places for mosquitoes and something needs to, we need a different design if we're going to do this. Thank you.
Microphone's still open.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just briefly on something I, as many of the previous speakers have said on this, that uh...
We need to start off with our name.
Oh, pardon me. My name is Eugene Pearl. I live in Indian Hills. Forgot that. I, like many of the previous speakers, already recycle and in many cases recycle going to certain groups or something to benefit them. And a question is, why should I be forced to pay to recycle something that I'm already doing? And since I already give my recycling to some other groups, I'm still going to give it to them, so I'm not, I'm going to have an empty container. I'm forced to pay a dollar 75 tax, excuse me, a fee for nothing. So it's, it's a dual thing. It's a thing about talking about recycling and talking about being forced to pay for it. So we need to separate the two. I've talked to many people who feel the same way. They don't want to be forced to pay, they recycle now. Thank you.
My name is Scott Miller. I'm a relatively recent move to North Little Rock. I'm a little bit embarrassed, I don't recycle now. I was previously living in a condo development. And we all know recycling is the right thing to do. I want to talk a little bit about the economics. There's apparently a misunderstanding that it's not economical or people aren't going to, who are, don't want to participate, aren't going to get anything out of this. Your landfill costs, your tipping fees will go up in the future. That's governed by federal regulations for landfills, for their costs. That cost is going to increase in the future. So in the future, without recycling, you as a city council are going to have the, or the difficult choice of either raising taxes again, keeping garbage at the same cost or cutting city services. These same people that are here rightfully complaining now about their costs of participating in this program will be the same people complaining about an increase in taxes to keep their garbage free or a cutting of bus service or a cutting of the handicap transportation van service or whatever need be in order to keep garbage recycling free. What you're doing with recycling, you're reducing your tipping costs. You are reducing the cost and the likelihood of a future tax increase to cover garbage costs in the future. Even a half cent increase in your taxes, sales tax to cover a future garbage rate five years down the line, that equates to somebody $350 a month fixed income. If they spend more than $350 a month, they're paying more than a dollar 75 today in their tipping fees, just an increased sales tax for that in the future. So you're actually doing them a favor and helping reduce the cost and pushing out that potential cost increase, tax increase to the future. That's why I think it's the right thing to do and is the right thing to do and I will participate in it now and I'm, particularly if it's more convenient. Thank you.
Microphone's still open. All right, we're getting ready to close the public hearing and at this point I'll adjourn to public hearing. Ask Ms. Whitby if you call the legislation, please.
Ordinance O328.
Please, uh, read it.
This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter to an agreement with the Pulaski County Regional Solid Waste Management District and Waste Management of Arkansas Incorporated for Residential Recycling and Curbside Pickup Services. Third and final reading.
Uh, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Now we're in discussion. Alderman Thomas?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I know that, as already mentioned, we've, are going to receive the VASPRO, which is going to be a great benefit to us. Going to be a lot of taxes from that. We're going to get a new Sam's and we just recently raised our...
Not Sam's, a Walmart.
It's not a Sam's.
Super Walmart.
I thought it'd be a Sam's too. It's just, okay, just a supermarket then. That still has a great deal of taxes. And then we've also raised our privileged taxes on a number of people. And I, I'm, for one feels that the city itself can't afford to take that burden on and, and to pay for the, the recycling. And, and so I, I'd like to make a motion that the city bear that expense and we do that, not pass the dollar 75 on to the people who do not want it. Many of those people are the ones that reminded me that, um, that about two, 22, or 23 months ago, and, and I guess we ought to say, read my lips, there will be no more taxes on the sanitation. Here it is 22 months later and we're already going up a dollar 75. So I, I just feel like that it's our, our responsibility and our duty to take that on because I'm telling you...
I'm going to, I'm going to rule that motion out of order. You have a right to bring that legislation back at the next council meeting. It should just be adopted to allocate a, a budget item to, to do that, but I'm going to rule that that's out of order at this point.
Okay, uh, let, let me finish then because I, I feel like that we ought to keep our word and, and we all, we did that. And many of those people here tonight that spoke, some of them actually worked for the passage of the tax on, based on the, I think the last speaker told me that they was one of the captains and they were very unhappy that now we're going back on our word and we're, we're actually now charging a tax that we said that would not happen. Now this, uh, this is going to cost the people about $36,750, roughly that each year, I mean each month. And then, and I don't blame man, Waste Management. I think they're good salesmen and I think that you got some willing people here to, to help you. But then, and every year you'll, will, they, these same people, not the people outside of the city, but people in the city will spend about $441,000. And over a, a seven year period, it'll be $3,870,000. So I, I'd like to make a motion, we would make that three years instead of seven years. I'd like to offer that motion that it not be a seven year contract, but a three year, seven years is a long...
I'll, I'll take that as a proper motion. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to amend from 7 to 3? Ms. Whitby on the motion to amend?
Gibson?
No.
Yolding?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
No.
Hite?
No.
Witcher?
No.
Motion fails.
Mayor?
Alderman Witcher?
May I ask a question, please?
Yes.
I think Mr. Thomas brought up something interesting that I do want to ask. The, the legislation does not state who or how it will be paid for.
You talk about, you know, I've discussed with Mr. Sisson how it will be implemented and a dollar 75 would be added to the electric bill.
The legislation doesn't say that, mayor.
The contract, the contract's not attached and that's the question. The proposal we saw, but the contract itself is not attached and, and so I want to try to address that.
Okay, all right. Alderman Gibson?
First thing, and, and I'm going to try to, two things I would like to assist you. We're going to authorize the mayor to enter to a contract for a dollar and 75 cents a We're going to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract for a dollar and seventy-five cents a month for a period of seven years, to implement the proposal brought to us by Waste Management to recycling curbside in North Little Rock. Number one. Number two is that we return to the citizens on an annual basis, a fee or a, well, you would call it a fee, I guess it would be a credit, or rebate, based on the reduction of cubic yards that goes into our landfills, based on a month-to-month basis, that we would compare June this year to June of next year, July, right down the line. And once a year, it would probably be, if we went July to June, it would probably be in August before the credit could be put together. And as I said earlier, if it was 10% recycling, it would probably be a $2 a year credit. If it's 20% recycling, probably a $4 a year credit. And on up to, at a 40% recycling, which I will do easily, 60, would be $8 a year credit. And that would be rebated to them as soon as we can put the numbers together at the end of that period of time.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. Two items together. And I will get those down in deep detail.
We're going to take that as, I'm going to take that as, I guess I'll just take it as a motion to amend this legislation in that respect.
Has to be because the contract is not attached to this. That puts the dollar and seventy-five cents for a period of seven years is not in what we have in front of us. Authorizing a mayor to enter into a contract that states those, that does those things. Seven years, dollar seventy-five cents a month, a 3% escalator not to exceed $2.08 after seven years.
Is there a second to that motion? All right, motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to amend? On the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas, yes?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Now, do you have a motion to adopt this amended?
I do.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Alderman Thomas? Well, let me go to Alderman Vestal and then back to Alderman Thomas.
Sure, that's fine.
Mayor, I didn't make my comments during the public comment section because I wanted to retain them for now. Not that many years ago, I remember seeing on the news night after night, this multi-thousands of tons of garbage on a barge floating up and down the East Coast because nobody would want to take it. It was on the news for about three or four weeks. And that is just an example of the situation that you put yourselves in when you don't take care of what your responsibilities are. It's our responsibility of this generation to make sure that we leave this, the face of this earth, and our city, which I believe is beautiful now, I want it to be as beautiful with my great-grandchildren out here playing in the park or my, the governor, whatever number governor may be, be running up and down the river in his bass boat fishing, for him to be able to catch fish that he could actually eat. And for those reasons, that's why I'm going to vote for this legislation.
Alderman Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, one other thing, I guess I want to make it sure, make the minutes sure that I was ruled out of order to try to amend it. There's no contract attached, but I was ruled out of order to try to amend it, that the city would pay for that.
That's fine. The record speaks for itself and you're, obviously, you're free to bring back in legislation anytime that this council needs to address that payment issue whenever you might like. Alderman Berry?
The only one thing that I still got the holdup on is, I just, it's tough for me to tell people if they don't want to pay the dollar seventy-five, they have to. It's just not fair. It's just not, it's just not fair to everybody. They don't, you know, if they don't want to do it, they don't want to take the green tugs and they shouldn't have to pay the dollar seventy-five. And I know it's all, it's either all or nothing, but I mean, we have about 50% of the people, I think probably 50% in our ward and probably about 50% of the people citywide that want to do it. We have 50% of the people that don't want to do it too. And they don't want to be charged a dollar seventy-five. And some folks, a dollar seventy-five does make some difference. And, you know, I just can't, recycling is the right thing to do and it's the thing that we're going to have to do down the road. There's no doubt. The EPA is going to come down the road, they're going to make us do it. But without, you know, without a full agreement, three-quarters or so, I just can't see making them pay.
Alderman Robinson? And then I'm going to, I'm going to close for this legislation and ask for a vote, but I've got a few comments I'd like to make too. Alderman Robinson?
That's fine. I'm in agreement with Alderman Berry about people that are not wanting to participate having to pay the fee. And plus, I know that a poll was taken of the Rose City area, not Rose City, Ward II area, and over 50% of the people were against recycling and for various reasons, and some was having to pay when they really did not want to participate. Personally, I think recycling is good. Personally, I think it's good. But the people of Ward II, majority of the people of Ward II have indicated that they do not want to participate. And because of that, I'm going to have to vote against it.
All right, let me just make a couple of quick comments and then I'll call it for a vote. I support recycling and support it very strongly and I understand each of the council members and the positions they've taken in some of the comments that they've made. You know, I put out probably three or four sacks a week for sanitation to pick up and I know my neighbor across the street puts out one sack a week. And if he wanted to pay one-sixth of what I pay, then he might have a legitimate argument to do that. But unfortunately, you know, the neighbor down the street hardly puts out any at all, maybe once every two or three weeks. It's unfortunate, but in order for us to provide services, we have to have a revenue stream and whether all participate or not, it's virtually impossible to set up a menu for us to be able to accomplish that. So while there is some merit to what Alderman Berry said and what Alderman Robinson commented on, it is virtually impossible for us to be able to do that. That's why this city council is here and that's why that we have to make a decision, even though in some instances it may seem a little unappropriate. You know, we took the $12, $13, $14, I forgot exactly what it was, two, three years ago off of sanitation. I wasn't going to use the word resent, but because, you know, I value my word and I value the representations I make, I do resent those who I feel know better that this council never made representations. I campaigned as much, if not more than anybody, perhaps more than anybody, for that penny sales tax. I went to neighborhood meetings, I went all over this community. And if I felt I was going back on my word, that's the last thing that I'd be up here doing. We promised to take the charge off of sanitation. Sanitation, as it then existed, was two pickups, once a week for crash and yard, for trash and yard waste, the other for household garbage. We never made any representations that that would do anything other than take off those existing costs. And for people, you know, I don't doubt that there could be some misunderstandings and certainly an argument made, but I totally resent any implication that, you know, that that was a blanket word that was given particularly by this mayor. Now, I'll accept misunderstandings, but I never, ever made any indications that taking off that sanitation charge would in any way be a blanket cost assumption for this city. Now, if this city council wants to do something like that, you know, then in my context, it certainly is able to do that. But in no way was there any indication made by me or by anyone that I was aware of that anything associated with the collection of waste. In fact, we've done even more than that. We've gone and included, you know, the leaf pickup and on and on, things that we do. We pick up much more liberally than virtually any community in this state. You put it to the curb and virtually we'll pick it up. So, you know, I really do not take issue with those people who are for against it. I don't take issue with the dollar seventy-five, but I do take strong, as strong and as concerted an objection as I can with those who feel that at least if it was coming out of this chair, that there was any implication that recycling would in any way be supported and paid for by this city in campaigning for that penny sales tax. In no way, no how, at no time, did I ever make any implications that would lead anybody to believe that. Now, with that, there's a motion made and seconded. I asked for the class word and I'm going to keep that, you know, so I'm going to rule Alderman Yildin out of order, didn't even see. With that, would you please call no? There's been a motion made and seconded.
You're talking me out of it.
Gibson?
Gibson votes yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Emergency passes.
Thank you very much. And...
Let's take about a three-minute recess, Mayor.
I don't have...
I got to have a bottle of water.
Great recess for three minutes.
Talk more.
Thank you. That's coming out of the mayor's office, but you pay, the citizens of this community pay for that. Thanks to citizenship in North Little Rock. And, well, and for those that pay tax. Let me, let me call this back to order and Whitby, if I could go with old business?
Resolution 0320, Mayor Hayes.
I'm just going to go ahead and let that, I'll just withdraw that and Mr. City Attorney, can you keep that hanging in case I want that filed again? I'll just ask you.
Absolutely.
Don't store it away too deeply. Same thing with, well, I'll just wait on, Ms. Whitby, when you get to 0312, that'll be the same thing too.
That's withdrawn?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Resolution 0341, Mayor Hayes and Alderman Yildin?
Let's hold it.
Yeah, we want that held.
Ordinance 0...
Am I right, Mr. Sykes?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Ordinance 03...
Excuse me, are they making some progress, as I understand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, keep an eye on it and we'll hold it here for a little longer then, make sure they continue.
Ordinance 0326, Alderman Height?
Something's come to my attention in the last day or two or three about that one and we're going to withdraw that.
Okay, we're up to new business?
All right, next item?
Next item is new business, resolution 0344, Mayor Hayes.
Yeah, I'm sure it did.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Finnegan Associates Incorporated for grant writing and fundraising services on behalf of the city.
With the adoption.
Well, seconded, but Mayor, you need to sell me on this one. Me too.
There, let's see, Mr., I don't know if it works here, I'll, go ahead, come on, Mr. Finnegan, we've been looking, as the council knows, for an opportunity to find some grant writing talents. And there was a, at least some discussion about hiring a staff person to do that. was a uh, uh, at least some discussion about hiring a, a staff person to do that but uh, we felt that there might be an opportunity to go out into the market so uh, we advertised for grant writing uh, uh, talent and uh, several people responded and the Finnegan uh, company is uh, is uh, reasonably new but has some terrific talent. If you wanna introduce yourself, explain uh, the uh, the uh, the efforts that you're going to put on our behalf and also the uh, the contract terms and uh, a little bit about the financials that we have discussed and are recommending to the council.
Sure mayor, if it, if it's please you and the council, I brought some of our brochures that explain everything in writing. What we did uh, Alderwoman and Alderman is we formed a company myself and, and two partners, uh, the main principles, we have about eighty years experience in this field uh, business, Dr. Gary Smith is uh, the COO of the company, he was formerly the superintendent of schools here in the Plaskey County Special School District. So combined amongst the three principles, we have experienced in roughly about twenty-five million dollars of successful grants procured. We formed this company so cities, counties and school districts can outsource their grant writing services to our firm and we absorb all the risk, uh, the city has none. We put and attach a guarantee on our work that for the retainer fee and the contract that the city's entering into with our firm, uh, that if we don't procure the amount of money that we're promising you, that we'll refund the portion of the retainer back to the city, uh, so the city doesn't have any risk in this. We met with mayor Hayes, we met with Mr. Sissens and the other staff and went through and explained the process, um, pointing out when we met with the fire chief and the police chief, that last month there was a seven hundred and fifty million dollar grant that was left on the table that nobody applied for, for upgrading and integrating fire department communications and technology, then there was another three hundred million dollar TOPS grant that was left on the table, again because people didn't apply for it, that would've helped you integrate your office communications and networking and make it more efficient. They came out with some new grant announcements today, now this is a unique year, the federal government has thirteen appropriation bills that fund their discretionary spending, they only passed one in November and then made a gigantic blockbuster bill and that passed in February and they're just now starting to publish what's available and most of these grants still have an application deadline of, of June and, excuse me, June and July. So, we're on top of all this stuff, the state budget's in kind of a chaos right now, the legislature's coming back in, so we're gonna be monitoring that too, to make sure we can get the city all the grant money from the state, the federal government, and we also do the private foundations too and, and look at the, all the private foundations to try to match all the money that we can possibly procure for our clients.
Questions? Alderman Yildin.
Okay. Let me go to my page here. On page three, C, number three, it says, "The company shall have the first opportunity to write the grant applications of all sources identified to the client by the company."
That means that if, if we find you like a two hundred million, or excuse me, a two million dollar grant and do all the work, that it's just to protect us for after doing all this research and writing that somebody just doesn't turn around and write the grant.
Okay, I understand that, what if, what if we have grants that we're getting in this city that, are, are, are you gonna come and say, uh, there's a historic preservation grant and uh, so we know about this, so we're gonna do this and get credit for it when?
No sir, not at all.
We do this anyway, I mean, that's what I'm trying to.
If there's any grant that the city's currently receiving now or that, that y'all just wanna keep doing, that's fine, this is for all new stuff that we're, we're finding for you and the city.
All new stuff, so if we received anything with, as far as fire and police, you're not gonna start doing all those?
No, unless the mayor or the police chief asks us to take over that responsibility because they wanna relieve themselves of that, that burden, then yeah, then we would assume that responsibility, but if there's some particular grants that the city's been getting for many years and you just wanna keep doing that, that's fine, this is for all new funding sources.
Yeah, the way we're, way we're looking at this is uh, is, you know, we, you know, we're not, you know, as you know, foreign to the grant process and uh, and so essentially what, you know, our personnel, fire department, police department, uh, uh, others of, those of us who have traditionally received certain input and certain grant opportunities, then we're free to keep plugging away, this is solely for new opportunities and new money.
Okay.
What this is for.
Okay.
Would this include parks and recreation like for the community centers?
Yes ma'am, what, what we do is, we, we do an initial consult with our client and we ask the city to, to identify what y'all's priorities are and then those, those priorities become our priorities and that's where we start searching and looking, um, we want happy clients.
Alderman Barry.
Do you have any specific specialties that y'all write grants in?
Yes sir, each partner has a, a specialty, mine goes back to law enforcement and business and insurance, Dr. Smith of course, education, the head of the grant writing division was with the federal government for many years and HUD, so that we each have the experience in, in those different areas and uh, you know, as we add clients, we look for talented grant writers uh, to do that, and we're also an Arkansas firm, so mayor Hayes or one of the department heads needs me or one of y'all, we're right here to come and service your needs, so our, our service will be top notch.
Alderman Height and Alderman Vestal.
Just curious if you have any other local clients, uh, or, you know, you say you're an Arkansas company, are you doing business in any other Arkansas cities?
Yes sir, we are close to closing, probably about twelve contracts now, as a matter of fact, we just came back from Pine Bluff this morning, a planning session and a meeting with their finance committee, uh, the city of Bradford next week, and then we have several others that we are, we are about to sign too.
So you're, you're just getting started at the end?
Yes sir.
They're a fresh company, they're, they're, they've got, they've got some talent, we've uh, we did an RFP, Mr. Sisson, Mr. The Vorcheck and uh, uh, I think who else was on the interview crew? Uh, Mr. Smith, uh, reviewed them, I've had a chance to meet uh, several times, uh, very impressive and a lot of talent, uh, Alderman Vestal.
Uh, Mr. Height.
Already took care of my question. Ms. Robinson.
Oh, I was gonna ask how long they've been in business.
We, we incorporated last November and we, we spent some more time fine tuning our, our business plan and our research and opened the doors in January.
Mayor. Alderman uh, Witcher.
Okay, Mr. Finnegan, in the case of, if the city indicated that they wanted to apply for a grant and you did the work and the grant was awarded and then we discovered or decided that we didn't have matching money or could not, nor did we wish to, what obligation do we have to you?
We uh, we have our clients involved in every step of the process, Alderman, just to alleviate situations like that, we might find four or five different grants that have different matching or, or different situations, so we notify the city before we start work, you know, we've got these five grants, one has a no match, one has a ten percent match that they'll let you do in kind, this one has a fifty percent match, that way the mayor or, or y'all can say, well, we don't want the fifty percent match, we want the grant that's no match and we'll, we're willing to put up ten percent, so then we write those grants and forget about the others.
Alright, let, let me try again if I may mayor, alright, let, let's say if, if the, the city administration or department head or the mayor decided they wanted to go after a grant and they guide you along the way and it got to the council and we balked, okay, now what, what then would be the obligation?
But.
Finnegan.
Go ahead.
Just so I get, I understand the question right, the mayor and everybody else is approved off on it, but then the council balked?
Yes.
We didn't have an authorized ordinance, I guess, to expend those funds, then, then we'd have to decline the grant.
Okay.
Rest assured, I, I, I would hope to keep the council informed as we go along if that, and anytime we get matching money, that wouldn't happen, but I, I understand the quick question.
Mayor, I remember very much a, a, a redwood ditch proposal that went all the way and we thought it was gonna pass and uh, many years ago, got to the, to the council level and there got to be a discussion on whether to cover the ditch or not to cover the ditch and we're not talking about ten years ago, we're talking twenty, twenty-five years ago.
Well, there was one eleven years.
Eleven years ago, and we backed out of the, I mean, that, we, the thing fell apart because of covering the ditch versus not covering the ditch.
Well, if my memory serves me, we went forward with it, we just made a decision to not cover it, we still, we still went through with the project.
But, but not to the extent that, of that the grant was written for. Uh, last question, there are several holes in this contract.
Yeah, we need to fill the holes.
Well, have you got a proposal to fill the holes or do you wanna bring this back next meeting with the hills we fill?
Uh, I think that, you know, we can talk about uh, the blanks right now, if we wanna, you know, Jason, why don't y'all sit down and uh, and let's uh.
I need to ask him a question in a minute if you could.
Alright, go ahead.
Uh, on, it says here, uh, a guarantee obtained two hundred and fifty thousand in grant funding for the city and a return for the retainer fee, so, so you're saying that they're, we're gonna get two hundred and fifty thousand for the twenty-five thousand dollar payment?
Yes sir, there's, there's two incentives built into the contract, the first is because of our guarantee, uh, that we fulfill the grant and it gets you at least that amount of funding, and then there's an incentive schedule that you know that we're gonna keep looking for the city to continue to find you money, there, there's the incentive schedule, it's on page six of the contract.
There, I'm, I'm, I'm okay, I just need your hand.
Yeah, let's uh, why don't, why don't we, and I thought that some of these blanks were already filled in, why don't uh, why don't y'all sit down and fill in these blanks so we can uh, uh, deal with a, an unblank amendment uh, as we, as we move forward, so uh, with that, let me, let me ask, should we hold this for a moment or two and go on to the next item while we do that?
Resolution oh three forty five mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Resolution accepting the low bid of Medtronic Physio Control for the purchase of automatic external defibrillators for the North Little Rock Fire Department.
Move for adoption.
Thank you, on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Resolution oh three forty six Alderwoman Robinson.
Please call it.
This is a resolution expressing the city council's intent to apply certain conditions on zoning or special use matters before resubmissions to the planning commission.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Next item is ordinance oh three thirty-two mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance establishing job classifications and numbers of employees for each department of the city government of North Little Rock for the year two thousand and three, first reading.
Ms. Spinnar rules place on a second reading?
Second. On the motion, spin.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance establishing job classifications and numbers of employees for each department of the city government of North Little Rock for the year two thousand and three, second reading.
Motion spin.
Move.
Second. Motion made and seconded, on the motion to spin, Ms. Whitby.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance establishing job classifications and numbers of employees for each department of the city government of North Little Rock for the year two thousand and three, third and final reading.
I have a question.
State question.
Section, uh, page two of ten, section eight, district court first division, can somebody explain to me the probation officer addition?
There's no addition, they, they changed the title, they're striking assistant.
Strike assistant probation, make them a probation officer.
And what will that do?
There's no, there's no money involved, it makes, you know.
There's not?
There is no. There's no money involved in anything here except the cadets.
Okay.
The cadets will be a slight increase from officer assistants.
I thought maybe they were moving from assistant to regular and getting their pay grade increase.
There's no, no.
Okay.
Increase of those cadets.
I believe what Mr. Sisson says.
I do too, I always do.
Any further questions? Uh, let me just go ahead and get a motion to adopt then.
I make a motion.
Motion made and seconded to adopt, on the motion, uh, Ms. Whitby.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Ordinance oh three thirty-three Alderman Vestal and Barry.
Call it please.
This is an ordinance adopting a zoning plan for recently annexed land in West Wind Pocket Annexation, first reading.
Ms. Spinnar rules place the ordinance on its second reading?
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance adopting a zoning plan for recently annexed land in West Wind Pocket Annexation, second reading.
Ms. Spinnar rules place on the third reading?
Second. On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance adopting a zoning plan for recently annexed land in West Wind Pocket Annexation, third and final reading.
On the question.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Ordinance oh three thirty-four mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance rezoning certain property located at fifty-seven hundred Pritchard Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I two to C three zone to allow for construction of a church by amendment ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Let's go ahead and take it to the third reading and then I'm gonna ask Mr. Vols a question or two, and I have a motion to spin.
Move.
Second. On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning certain property located at fifty-seven hundred Pritchard Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I two to C three zone to allow for construction of a church by amendment ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Motion to second rule.
Move.
Second.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning certain property located at fifty-seven hundred Pritchard Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I two to C three zone to allow for construction of a church by amendment ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
Mr. Vols, can uh, can you tell us a little bit about this and uh, what the planning commission recommended?
Yes sir, um, the area at the end of Pritchard Drive is zoned industrial, uh, there's a church that's wanting to construct at the end of the cul-de-sac and thus requiring the rezoning, uh, during debate at the planning commission, uh, this will go to a plat approved for, for use and they, the owners agreed to extend the road, um, along this property, this, this lot and provide right of way, uh, the, the large concern out of the planning commission was trying to get improved access to Pritchard Drive, uh, substandard type entry from one sixty-one and we're looking at solutions to that problem.
I know Alderwoman Robinson has an amendment, uh, did you, are you aware of that amendment?
Yes sir.
Uh, and is that comport with the planning commission's recommendation?
Yes.
Uh, I understand this church will be, uh, and I think that it's two of the representatives are here, if I'm not mistaken, uh, that, that it might very well be a Hindu church and uh, and, and, and join our community, I know I had a chance to meet with the two gentlemen a little earlier and uh, would be very uh, pleased, I know, to, to, to welcome the diversity that we're able to enjoy as a community and, and I understand, like you said, this was a recommendation by the planning commission, Ms. Robinson, do you have an amendment?
I, I do have an amendment, I also have a question for Mr. Vols.
Okay.
My question to Mr. Vols, I'm concerned about uh, the water back there.
Yes.
That place holds water, so what, what are we gonna do about that, is there some stormwater runoff or, I mean, what are we gonna do about it?
There's a large solution that's probably needed for that area to enlarge the outfall going uh, to the Freeman Ditch down to Protho Swamp, uh, that would be a larger project. Under our floodplain ordinance, any construction will have to be one foot above the floodplain, so we're not necessarily concerned about the church building, uh, you know, damages from that, but uh, we don't have a program at this time to solve the drainage problem, that's a.
So what your answer is then, you're saying that the, that, that the drainage problem would exist but that the construction requirements would cause that problem not to have, uh, not to, not to, not to cause the church to flood, but it may have some of, of problems if there is uh, uh, water standing and or.
Can they, can they build in a floodplain?
You can build in floodplain in North Little Rock, uh, we're part of the National Flood Insurance Program and that's to guarantee that property, um, is, the, the first floor occupancy is one foot above the hundred year flood, uh, but again, the solution is to look at this drainage basin and to try to improve that ditch outfall, I think the problem's probably there at one sixty-one, the bottleneck of the drainage structure and uh, you know, that's part of the problem, other than it being a very flat area. that's part of the problem, other than it being a very flat area and slow drainage.
I think it's Bethany in 160, uh, Bethany in 161.
Yes, sir. Right about it, and that location's the problem area.
Ms. Robinson, you want to propose your amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, would you, uh, submit it to the, uh, city clerk? Do you have a copy?
I have a copy.
Okay. Uh, would you like to move that amendment?
Yes. I propose, um, this amendment, uh, section two, that this, uh, rezoning is conditioned on the dedication of roadway right-of-way. I'd like to propose this to amendment number, what's the amendment? Uh...
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to amend. Ms. Whitby, would you read the amendment?
Yes, sir. The language will be, "Section two, that the, that this rezoning is conditioned on A, the dedication of roadway right-of-way extending Pritchard Drive to Taylor Road per the attached map, and B, extending Pritchard Drive to the northwest corner of proposed lot 9C. Said road extension to include a temporary turnaround. These conditions being agreeable with the applicant." And that's other sections, section two becomes three, three becomes four, et cetera.
Good. Motion made and seconded. Discussion, Alderman Berry?
Yes, sir.
Now, don't, don't we, when we do new construction, don't we do some kind of drainage?
Yes. They'll come in to the planning commission if they're approved for use, and we'll have a plat. They'll have to provide onsite detention or pay an in lieu IP into the Public Works Drainage Fund.
Okay. I, I thought we had, uh...
This is, this is on the amendment now.
Okay.
All right. Is this on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right. Ms. Robinson, when you made your amendment, I know you included exhibit A, didn't you, the drawing?
That's what I heard.
That was your intent?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I heard. Thank you, Alderman.
I included it.
What was it?
Uh, we're on the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Gibson votes yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
For the amendment, yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Will we adopt his amendment?
Is there a second?
Mayor, I, I got a couple of questions, because I want to make sure that we understand...
Let me, let me just go ahead and get this second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, then, Alderman.
That they are dedicating, not building, but they're dedicating a roadway along the top of the northern edge of their property.
Uh, the proposed lot.
For the proposed lot. They're, they're dedicating the right-of-way, but not building the road. And so there's, and then, and then, but they're also dedicating the property all the rest of the way through to be able to tie it in. And do they own this lot 9R2?
Yes, they do.
They own that lot. And so we're putting a condition in that they're dedicating that right-of-way through there.
Yes. The planning commission wanted a solution, and this provides us right-of-way for a solution. It doesn't build it all the way to Taylor. Uh, there may be a better solution going south off of Pritchard somewhere to, uh, say, through Southwest Truck Salvage Yard. Uh, that would be a better solution, but this is a solution that they control.
If they keep building back through here and they don't do something on this road, there's a distinct problem. I mean, because you've got a road that already is not in good shape. And, and I'm not trying to bring up something that's going to be a problem, but if you add any more vehicles, you're, you're going into a turnaround down there at a church parking lot. But you still have got a roadway that is not built, and, and I'm not sure how it's going to be built to be able to accommodate, accommodate the traffic that's on it. Uh, and, and it's a swap road, for lack of a better way to put it.
Uh, during deliberation, the planning commission asked them with any, or instructed them that with any further development of this area, they extend, expect that road to be constructed to Taylor. Uh, this is a, it'll be a church building, and their, their traffic study was showing low volumes expected to that, uh, facility.
The volume at this point at 161 and Pritchard virtually needs to stop line because of the vehicles that cannot get out of there to turn, because all of them basically, when they come out, they want to turn left.
Right.
And to go to the interstate to get, to go somewhere.
And the better solution would be to find a route due south halfway down Pritchard Drive.
Well, I know this is going to the plat committee, but two questions. They're going to have to find, they're building on the very corner. Uh, they've got to find something to do with the water that's on their site, and that's not draining down to the next person. I mean, even though you've got that, that big empty thing there.
All right. We've not reviewed a site development plan yet. Uh, we're just discussing the use question.
I don't have a problem with the use. I just want to, I want to get comfortable.
Okay.
And the development of a road from Pritchard to Taylor, who would do that? Who would pay for that?
If they came in with another motel, the planning commission has given them instructions that they're expecting that to be continued, uh, with another commercial development on this property. So the next...
In other words, the development would pay for it?
Yes.
If, if they have it. It's, it's just a bad location.
Any other discussion? All right. Motion, uh, made and seconded to adopt. Is amended. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Just move for adopt?
No. Thomas?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
Alderman Barry?
No.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Mayor, you need to move, I think.
No, that's six. Have any, have any favor, voted for the emergency?
Six.
Huh?
Six.
That's what I can...
Okay.
Mayor, the only thing I want to caution, I want us to, as we start building in these extending roads that have difficulty, we're going to have to find someone who's willing to pay for that when they extend them. We're, we're running into a, a very similar situation up of, on the backside of Baptist Hospital right now, trying to get traffic in and out of a very desirable site, but with no means to be able to do it. And so hopefully, they can come back in with a plan, with a site plan that's going to develop, going to address all of this.
I know the two gentlemen, uh, several gentlemen are here that, uh, that, that several of whom I've had a chance to visit with a little earlier today. What, what was done tonight is that the zoning was changed for the, for the permission that the construction of the church is okay. However, there are some drainage issues that are of some consequence and concern, as well as some access issues that deal with coming back to that property. Uh, so, you know, before the planning commission, uh, will be able to actually give a, a building permit, those issues need to be resolved at, at that level. So, you know, the council has given us blessing tonight for you to be able to build a church, but you can't do it until those issues are addressed, access and drainage.
And based on, can I explain that to them? Well...
Right. Mr. Schottos back there, and I assume you, your position being seated is, 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 is indicating that you will assist them in, uh, in, in addressing these issues?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Schottos.
Well, that's the reason why I voted against it, because I thought it was a little bit premature without the drainage and the roadway.
That will be, that will be addressed.
Real problem.
Okay, uh, let's go back to our, our contract, fill in some blanks.
Mayor, as of the first page of the Agreement for Professional Services...
All right, let me ask y'all to refer to your... Still at work, Alderman.
This will be painful.
He's closing up shop.
Hey, he was. He was cleaning.
Still at work. Uh, what's that number again?
It's Resolution 0344.
0344.
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's fill in some blanks. Uh...
As, as of the client is the city of North Little Rock.
Okay.
Uh, lower on the page, the principal representative of the client shall be Patrick Hayes, titled Mayor. There is no or.
All right.
Mayor, the, the remainder of the blanks in this document can be filled in with a sum figure of $250,000.
Okay.
In, in every blank that you come to, that is the appropriate dollar figure to fill in.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the amendment. Uh, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Vote yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption is amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
That concludes all the amendments.
Thank you very much. Uh, any council member make any comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Finnegan. We look forward to you, uh, raising lots of money for it.
I look forward to it too, Mayor Alderman. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
We'll take all those 99%.
Mayor, I... Uh, we got bunches. Uh, I'm going to look to Alderman Gibson, since he's my neighbor.
On our table, on our council table tonight, was a letter from Central Arkansas Transit in regard to...
Water.
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 Central Arkansas Transit, Central Arkansas Water. Uh, about, and if they're going to, this needs to be probably put on our next, uh, city council member, uh, meeting as a communication.
Communication.
Because it really talks about demand during the summertime and try to avoid watering your lawn and, and your garden between 5:30 and 7:30 in the morning, when everybody's washing clothes and taking showers and doing a lot of cooking, and it takes a, it takes a peak load on the system when you do that. And, and that while we have plenty of water, we don't have plenty of water to have it all turned on at one time. So, they're basically asking that between 5:30 and 7:30 in the morning. You don't have to worry about, worry about me being out there at 5:30 anyway, so.
Maybe Mr. Harvey can come and explain that to us. He did a very good job last year explaining that to me.
Yes.
Ms. Whitby, have you got a copy of this communication?
Yes, sir.
Would you make sure that makes, uh, the next, uh, communications, uh, next council meeting?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate, Alderman, uh, you know, that was, that was given to me. Uh, you know, it, it, it sure makes a lot of sense. And, uh, and the direction of that letter, along with the resolution, is to, to ask people to try to avoid, basically watering between the hours of 5:30 and 7:30, uh-
A.M.
A.M. in the morning, uh, and, and, and that's what drives most of our peak usage. And, and so the more we can educate people, particularly those that are, are, uh, waterers, uh, with meters, that that would, I think, be a relatively easy thing to do. But I agree with you. We'll bring it up at next council meeting, and maybe we can discuss it a little bit, and, uh, try to find out-
And I reserve the right, a little later, to bring up one other item.
Your, your reservations, no?
Please.
Can we get that green bucket up here so we can?
I have water.
The green bucket, the green bucket is, uh, hopefully still here. If not, uh-
Hey, you can set that out on the street, and it'll be gone in three minutes. It's aluminum can.
Uh, council, uh, you know, microphone's still open for any council member?
Oh.
Alderman Berry?
I have a question.
All right.
Uh, the I-40 bridge?
Okay.
Leave, at the Levy over there?
Okay.
Uh, do they expect to tear both bridges down?
Not the same time. One at a time.
I mean, part of the, uh, structure on the Levy side is tied together with both sides.
I was told that both, that they were going to have to tear it all, to tear it all down and reconstruct a brand-new, better bridge. So I would imagine they'll do it, you know, one at a time. But that's what I was told, is that they're, they, they were hoping that they could use some of the support, but they've determined they can't. So basically, what you see there is going to be gone, and, uh, brand-new bridges are going to be up.
You're going to run it up, Charlie, you'll drive.
Yeah, well, not, not as far as I, anything I can do about it.
Yeah. Mayor, sir, do you have a announcement pertaining to additional hours to senior center?
Uh, Alderman Witcher? Uh, yeah, I, I would be happy to. Thank you very much. Uh, beginning next week, uh, the Senior Citizen Center for what we call the Extended Membership, uh, will go from 7 o'clock in the evening to 8 o'clock in the evening. Uh, as soon as the, uh, staff can hire, uh, sufficient staff to accommodate, uh, weekend service, which we'd anticipate would be between the next 30 to 60 days, uh, the hours of the center will then go, uh, to, uh, on Saturday for the, uh, uh, for the Extended Membership or the $100 Membership from 7 to 9 in the morning, and for the General Membership from 9 to 1. Uh, and then, on Sunday, for the Extended Membership or the $100 Membership from 12 to 2, and for the General Membership from 2 to 5 o'clock. Uh, one of the things that amazed me, and I see Mr. Baxter out there, that in doing some research for this, uh, and looking around at other senior citizen centers in the state, uh, out of the 80-plus centers that we, uh, know are in existence, zero, uh, or none are open on weekends. So we will be the first senior citizen center, this, I'm corrected by Mr. Baxter, that will have any weekend hours. And I want to compliment, uh, Mr. Baxter, all, so Alderman Witcher, who was a part of the, uh, non-voting, part of the, uh, Senior Citizen Commission, uh, for, uh, you know, for their diligence, and certainly Mr. Baxter and his staff. What number are we at now, Mr. Baxter?
A little over 3,200.
3,200 members. So, uh, it's an exciting opportunity. Uh, the, the library just recently opened. Uh, that, uh, that campus is a beehive of activity and only grow. So we appreciate all the, uh-
Mayor, may I make one small correction?
Yes.
For those of us who use, that we refer to it as the Hayes Center.
That is absolutely fine with me, and I appreciate it.
I, I, uh, 97% of the people down there don't think they're a senior citizen, until, until they go to the grocery store and want their discounts. Or McDonald's.
Alderman Bestel, I mean Alderman Yildin.
You know, I probably shouldn't say anything, but-
Don't.
Yeah, I'm going to say, can I get a rebate on my taxes for the money that's spent down there? Because, you know, I don't get to use it. And I hate to have to be paying. I, I bet there's probably, God.
Here, here. There's, you can have my candy.
Yeah. I bet there's, you know, no telling what the percentage is of people that aren't old enough to go down there, and here they are paying that tax, and to go into that, and I just-
Greg, thank you very much for the tax you've had.
That's my dang logic.
Microphone's open. Uh, 811, call the microphone, call in.
You know where I'm going with that.
I know where you're going.
Mr. Ard?
My name is James Ard, and I'd like for each councilman to listen, and woman, didn't mess up, did I, Mayor? To listen very carefully. As you know, I'm opposed to the alcohol that will be sold July 4th weekend. There are several of us here tonight who'll probably speak on this issue. I would like to share something with you all. I shared it with the Parks Commission. Mr. Rhodes, I believe, are you going to do your little tonight about how the security and everything is going to go?
Send the communication, Mr. Ard.
Okay. Uh, several years ago, I had a friend of mine who's returning home from a soccer tournament with his children. They had a car wreck, head-on collision with a drunk driver. He died instantly. There was three young ladies, one of them about six, one about nine, and one about 12. They helped their sister while she died. I'm not against the sale of alcohol. I'm not against someone having a good time. This is one time I feel that we should not have it in the parks. I've watched, I've been at ballgames and watched them get irate at the Empire, and one of my thoughts is, what will happen if they have a little too much to drink? I will let the other people that's going to speak say what they have to say. This rose I wear tonight is for the people that have survived an accident with a drunk driver. Think about what you're putting out there, and maybe put a stop to it. I talked to the mayor of Sherwood, and he didn't feel that they needed to do something different to let the tournaments come to their place. I would like to end it with a prayer, but some people say you're showing out when you do that. So will everybody just please say their own little prayer about this issue? I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. You know, I also spoke to the Parks and Recreation, uh, Department about this, uh, beer and stuff that would be sold in Burns Park. And I also lost a, a very dear friend. It was in the late 60s or early 70s. It's Rose City intersection. And I hope that this family is not watching tonight, because I don't want to bring back no bad memories. But this lady was eight months pregnant, and I stood right there beside the car and watched both of them die. And, uh, I'm not against drinking, but I am against drinking and driving. And, uh, I know her, uh, the guy that's, is going to be sponsoring this, he said there would be extra policemen, uh, patrolling the parks and stuff. And I just hope that no one gets hurt, either from y'all's family or mine, or somebody that we know. And the next thing I want to talk about is- Alderman Bestel brought this up a while ago, about taking care of our responsibilities. Not only how to put this, except just give it to you and let y'all do what you want to do with it. On this one-cent sales tax was passed, I remember Buddy Valance just jumping up and down and saying if this tax was passed, the jails would never need no more money, that they would be sufficient from, ain't no telling when. Well, I'd like, kind of like to know what happened to that. And I know that y'all are the leaders of North Little Rock. We vote y'all in to take care of the, of business of North Little Rock. And I know, uh, Mayor Daley of Little Rock, and his council members has also voted for that. But I'd like to see y'all get together, the city of North Little Rock, city of Little Rock, with Buddy Valance, and, uh, see if they can't do something about our jails. Because I feel like if we can buy trolley cars, we can buy submarines, and we can-
We're not buying any submarines, Mr. Ard. We're not buying any-
Oh, we're not buying it, just going to rent it.
No, we're not renting it. It's been given to us.
Well, anyhow, there's, uh, there's a lot of money there that's, that's going to be changing hands, and I'd just like for y'all to take it under consideration. I don't know where it can be, a, a bond or what. But this stuff is not going to matter with these people walking the streets. It should be locked up. And, uh, it's a recycle deal. Uh, that's, I know, uh, y'all allow it to happen, and like I said, I, I don't feel like I should have to pay for something that I'm not going to be using. But, uh, when y'all turned the water over to, uh, the water company that took it, it cost me almost $700 to get a, a backflush put on there, when all it would have took was $10 or $15 ball with a spring behind it. And that, uh, that is ridiculous. And I know you didn't, uh, you allowed it to happen, and I have not yet heard you go to bat for anybody that had to put them things on their water supply.
Mr. Taylor, you, if it'd been the city of North Little Rock's water department or, you know, Central Arkansas or, the requirements would have been the same. It's simply enforcing a federal requirement that is, is come due, it just happened to come due at the time after the merger rather than before the merger. The water department itself, you know, really had no choice other than enforce federal requirements.
Okay, well, I apologize for that then. And I'd like to thank the electric department for keeping our streetlights working. Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes?
Mr. Rhodes, did you come to the mic? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, my name is Sharon, and I'm from the Poe addition, and I have a couple of questions about the recycling. Um, my question is, if you have a house that's for sale in North Little Rock, and you have your electric on, but you're not occupying that house, are you still going to be obligated to participate, and are you going to have to pay that dollar and 75 cents a month?
Yes, Sergeant, I believe we have a, a UAD directive in regard when sanitation fee was originally set up, that if they had, if no one occupied the house, we had a, a way within UAD, waived sanitation. So I'm assuming we would have a way to waive the- Recycling fee. We, we did do that. We did it sparingly, but if we know someone is only there to be set, to be sold, and is not there for any length of time, we would then- That nobody's occupying the piece of property. Yeah. Well, back then, we waived the sanitation. Right. And I was, and I, and my, as I asked earlier tonight, is that that also be included as part of, of the old- We'll, we'll be happy to, to work some system.
Yeah, what I, what I would-
There's about 10 or 12 cases of that in the city at this point. It is all there are.
And my other comment, it's not a question, but it's a comment. I moved back to North Little Rock from the east coast, and we had the recycling out there, but it's nothing like you do in Little Rock or North Little Rock. We had, like, the regular trash cans that were like three and a half to four foot tall, on wheels, with a lid, that we could pull or push our recycled goods to the curbside. And my other comment is, excuse me, with the open container that you're giving the people to use, what are you going to do about the dogs and the cats that get in there and pull that stuff out? And tell me, I mean, I know there's a leash law for dogs, and I know there's a leash law for cats, but that does not work. Are they get into our trash all the time? So, I mean, is there not someone that can reconstruct that plastic bin, excuse me, and put a flap on there somehow?
We'll, we'll, we'll certainly work with the provider to try to make, uh, any, to address any problems that, that, you know, that are there. And, and I don't know, I mean, I, you know, obviously, it's been working in Little Rock for a long time, and, uh, and that was one of the reasons that I asked the question, what some of the complaints were. And I don't know, you know, I, I mean, I, I know that, that in terms of my own trash, if I put it out, uh, the night before, then, then a cat or, or an animal, you know, likely might tear into it. Uh, I don't put it out till that morning. Uh, but in recyclables, I don't know that there's going to be much temptation for animals. Now, I may be wrong, but we'll work with the, uh, provider to try to address whatever is reasonable in terms of, of trying to make it as easy on the citizens as we can.
And we're talking about pollution and, and surviving and, and nurturing the earth. What are you going to do about the pollution that the big diesel trucks put out when they come in our neighborhoods to pick that stuff up? How are we going to control that? There's no way. I mean, I'm for recycling. I am. I did it for years and years, but I think with it, there's some things that really need to be worked out on that program before you, before people really do it. Thank you.
Microphone's open.
Mr. Rhodes?
Uh- Then, Mr. Rhodes, you want to come to the microphone? Ms. Robinson wants to ask you a question.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, my name is Steve Jenkins. I have Jenkins Enterprises with my family here in town. And, uh, among being in the import and novelty business, of course, we're also in the trailer sign business, and that's why I'm here tonight. As many of you know, two years ago, this council passed an ordinance that effectively banned portable signs and trailer signs in North Little Rock. And believe it or not, two years has come and gone. Uh, I'm here for three reasons tonight. One, to, uh, to thank this council for listening. Uh, that sign ordinance that was passed two years ago, of course, was devastating to our trailer sign business, but this council was sensitive to our needs, listened to that, and was able to work out a two-year grandfather clause to give us some time to retrain our people and to put our resources in other areas. I'm also here to report to you that in that two-year time period, that's what we've done. As a result of that, we have sold probably two-thirds of our trailer sign fleet. We've gone from having about 35 signs rented in North Little Rock to having eight today. Um, this sign ordinance will become effective, I think it's actually May 3rd, but I'm here to report that all Jenkins Enterprises trailer signs will be picked up by Friday of this week. Uh, this month, we began notifying our customers and telling them where we were at on things, and, uh, we've had a couple of customers actually call this week, not aware, wanting to rent a sign. Of course, we turned that business down, informed them about the sign code, and, uh, told them what was happening here. They were graciously accepted that. Uh, we have gone from having, I think, about 70 signs in our fleet to having about 25. So, we've been able to make good use of the two years that y'all were sensitive enough to give us. We certainly appreciate that. Um, we will be out of the sign business eventually, completely. Uh, we still have about 25 signs to sell. Uh, as you may have noticed, if you read the paper this week, uh, the, uh, we will continue to rent signs to firecracker stands in unincorporated areas of the county, and in some other areas where trailer signs are located, until we are able to sell all of our signs, after which time we will be out of the trailer sign business. And then the last reason I'm here is just to pledge our support to, uh, to the city of North Little Rock and to this council. Uh, we've been a proud member of the business community here in North Little Rock for at least, uh, I would say 30 years, and the trailer sign business for 22 years. And during that time period, we grew our business from two part-time teenage workers to, uh, 45 full-time people, uh, with, uh, a pretty significant, uh, plant down on Bethany Road here in North Little Rock. So, again, I just wanted to come and give you that report, tell you all where we stand, make myself available to you, should you have any questions with regard to that. Uh, I do want to also point out that the paper, uh, reported that some signs had been sold in North Little Rock. We are not selling any signs in North Little Rock due to the fact that clearly, if we sold a sign to someone, then they're going to be mad at us because we sold them something that in just a short period of time would be, uh, uh, not in compliance with the city sign code. There are some other signs, uh, that people own that, of course, naturally will have to be addressed, but I feel sure that Mr. Sykes and his crew can, can take care of that. So, uh, if there's any way that we can be of help, or if you have any questions, if you see a sign, or you think of something, and, well, there's a Jenkins sign, uh, let me assure you, all of our signs will be picked up, uh, no later than Friday. But if you have any questions, feel free to, to be in touch. And, and again, thank you very much for the time that was given us.
So now you don't have to pay that privilege tax on those signs?
Not on the signs. Not on the signs. Got a couple of other ones I have to pay, but not on the signs.
And, and we're glad that you retrained and added, uh, and, and I would also echo your comments about, you know, the, the active and, and contributing, uh, nature of, of, of Jenkins Enterprises, and certainly appreciate your leadership, uh, not only now, but, uh, during your tenure as president of the chamber. Uh, we, uh, we like to work things out, and we appreciate the spirit in what you've done. Thanks a lot.
That's why we like a mayor, automatic former government. Thank you very much.
Microphone's open.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Baloo. I work as the executive director for Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And, um, I'd like to just ask a few questions about a concern that's come to our attention, and it was alluded to earlier, regarding alcohol and the Bush-Pepsi softball tournament that's coming up and scheduled for North Little Rock over the Fourth of July.